Good evening. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Trumbull Board of Education, Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Um, now, so you know, the article goes on to say. With liberty, justice, law.
Okay, our first order of business is recognition of the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program, commended students and semifinalists. Mr. Guarino.
Thank you. Good evening. It's uh, it's nice to be back, at least in this room in front of all you. It's been a long time. So it is my honor to recognize the following students who are commended scholars as part of the National Merit Scholarship Program. So as a point of information for the public, there's a 1.5 million students participated in the PSAT last November. So we're talking about our seniors this year who were juniors last year. And through that, the College Board recognized 50,000 students overall. Of those 50,000 students, 34,000 students are considered commended scholars. And of that, we have 13 students on the class of 2021 who are recognized here tonight. And it's a recognition not only their accomplishments as students, I think it's also a testament to teachers, K-12. It's also a testament to the support that their families give them day in and day out, and every night when they're doing homework and all the supports that they get. So it really is an honor for these students. And I think our students are recognized in a lot of different ways. And this is one of them in terms of their performance on that assessment on that one particular day. So I had the opportunity this year to meet with most students. It was a little bit more challenging this year as our students were cohorted to congratulate them for their accomplishments. So I'd like to recognize the following 13 students who are commended scholars in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. So please join me in congratulating the following students. Jack Allen, Kalen Carbone, Garrett Chang, Alexander Cooley, Alexander Ferretti, Joseph Gregory, Venetia, Rachel Levinson, Madeline Marsh, Canal Meta, Amaya Merlo Beras, Aditya Pravakaran, excuse me, and Matthew Riley. So please join me in recognizing those 13 students for their wonderful accomplishments.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you very much.
There's also another student of that 50,000 students in the program of the College Board has also recognized 16,000 students who go on through the competition as semifinalists. And we're honored this year to recognize Grace Song as Trumbull High School's semifinal. So congratulations to Grace. And I know that Grace is here with us this evening. So Grace, congratulations to you and your accomplishment. And I don't know if Grace has some words for the board or if the board has any questions for Grace, but congratulations once again, Grace, for your accomplishment.
Grace, please speak if you would like.
Thank you. I just also want to say thank you to, I guess, all of the community who has helped me because I know that it's been kind of like a long, it's been kind of a long haul. And it's, I wouldn't be here without like the support of my teachers, my family, my friends. So.
Well, congratulations and good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you.
Okay, correspondence. Mrs. Norse.
The Board of Education received 17 emails since our last meeting. The Chair and Dr. Zimmel answered a couple of them. Jennifer Lindade, Luigi Veltrey, Alina Veltrey, Sarah Collins, Kathleen De Leon, January Williamson, Kristen Highland, Mary Murdock, and Julie Heffers all had emails that dealt with the reopening of schools. These emails can be summarized as this way. Most of them address adding reopening to all Board of Ed agendas. They consider, I want us to consider reinstating five days per week for all students. Children's needs are not being met in the hybrid model, especially emotional. And what is being done at Trumbull High School to help students handle all the stress that's coming up at the school? And they want to have more open discussions on the topic. Lisa Newland questioned our cleaning protocols because she has had many students and teachers talk to her about that our schools are not clean. Lily Liu and Grace Young asked for administration to reconsider supporting the ethics club. Gloria Manna sent a link for the 1776 units and suggested that the high school have a parent page which would list what books are to be read so that parents could see the titles and then influence their children on what to eat, excuse me, read. Kat Lamy wrote to us and reminded us about being fair on the amount of time that we allow speakers since she felt some had not received the same amount of time. And we received a wonderful thank you from Suz Veskey who said that the whole opening of school ran very smooth and that the hybrid, hybrid model has been wonderful for her son. That is all our communications.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Norse. Next is public comment. Our speaker is Myra Francis.
Madam Chair, Francis is here. Ms. Francis, if you're here, press the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're on the phone. It does not appear that Ms. Francis is here.
What do you think, Bill?
Uh, it doesn't look like she is available right now to speak.
Okay, we'll see if we can get back later. Okay. Okay, let's move on to the superintendent's report, please.
All right, thank you. Hold on. Thank you. She's pushing that button still so people can hear me here and at home. I do have quite a few updates and some of them actually will respond to some of the emails that we've been receiving. And then later in the agenda, we do have a report on reopening. So I will hold off on reopening comments until that piece. First, I continue to get out to all the buildings and see what's going on. And I guess to tell you, I continue to be very impressed with our teachers who are truly engaging our kids, keeping a very positive attitude with the children. They're engaging at home, they're engaging in class. That's not to say there's not issues. There's still, it's still a hard thing to do, but I can see how hard our teachers are working. Besides that, I've also want to mention that I also run into our security guards, custodians, paros, nurses, lunch aides, secretaries. All of them are really putting forth the best effort. They really are. They shouldn't, they may not be in front of the camera, so to speak, getting, you know, being seen at home, but they're really working hard to make sure we keep our schools open as well. So I just want to give a shout out to all them as well. In terms of cleaning, I did want to, I did want to mention this. The, when this district opened, did their reopening, they did build in Saturday cleaning for the first month. So through September, they had Saturday cleaning built into the reopening process, but not beyond that. And so first of all, the custodial overtime was not built into your budget for the first time at first, and certainly not built into your budget across the year. However, and more importantly, I do want to address the Saturday cleaning. So one of the things I benefit from every Tuesday morning, and the state has done a great job on this, is that the State Department of Education, the Department of Public Health have a go-to meeting where all superintendents and school health people get a chance to listen to the folks at the State Department and the Department of Public Health provide responses to our specific questions. So we've talked about a lot of things, especially around cleaning at these meetings, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the cleaning process that is expected from, from those groups and their, their feedback to all superintendents. First of all, cleaning is definitely an important part of the mitigation strategies. So cleaning definitely is important. But they're also continuously saying, and I hear it week by week, that they really believe and the evidence continues to point to the fact that COVID is being transmitted through droplets. So that is when people are speaking, droplets coming out. And that's why wearing masks reduce the droplets and being farther distance away ensures that if droplets escape the mask. So that's, that's what they keep pushing. They also push that you can share materials. They've talked a lot about library materials, but I asked a specific question this morning about materials like OTPTUs and any other materials like PE materials that are used and shared. And the feedback from the DPH has been that if you're not going to clean those items, they should sit idle for at least 24 hours. So you can imagine there might be some materials that we can't get to washing down all the time. They're saying as long as they sit idle for 24 hours so a kid could use it, it can be put away 24 hours later, you can use it again without actually cleaning it. If you can clean it, they say, sure, you should, you should clean it. But I think that's important to note because they say that materials on hard surfaces is rarely a way that COVID is being transmitted. It's not off of hard surfaces. They, they're not able to find any situations where that's occurred. Continuing to talk about this, there has been a story, a recent headline you may have seen where they talked about COVID lasting for 28 days on hard surfaces. If you didn't see that, that is something that was recently stated, but even the DPH on the call today addressed that and said that they're not changing any of their guidance based off of this news headline. That, that was under a very controlled set of circumstances in a laboratory and that it's not something that's going to change their, their, their feedback to schools about how they should change during their business. So anyways, weekends last more than 48 hours. So when the kids leave us, there's 48 hours of time. So they're, they're comfortable saying that virus is dying over the weekend. And so this whole concept of deep cleaning is not necessary. So however, they do push, and we have in our plan that we're supposed to be cleaning on a daily basis, all of our surfaces and especially the high-touch surfaces. And that's what John Morello and his team has been focusing on, the high-touch surfaces and cleaning those daily. And that happens every day. There may be some criticism that there could be some areas that perhaps get missed, and I'll work with John on that. I saw a couple of emails where there might be some areas that are missed, and I'll, I'll work with him on that. But we need to keep in mind that it's the daily cleaning process and hitting those high-touch surfaces that's, that's truly important. So the cleaning on Saturdays was deemed unnecessary and, like I said, not budgeted. And even if we ever move back into five-day-per-week school, which some districts have, you wouldn't have that Wednesday cleaning either. And again, based on what I just said, it's, it's not a major issue because we're cleaning on a daily basis. So I just wanted to mention that because I did hear from some people about, about cleaning. Other mitigation strategies that are far more important, one, parents need to make sure that if your child has any kind of symptoms, they keep them home. So that's, that's an important thing. It's been something that we've been dealing with in some of these cases. If a child has symptoms, they should not be coming into our buildings because they're putting additional students at risk of one, getting COVID, but probably more likely at risk of quarantine, which is where some parents are frustrated that their children are being required to quarantine. And a second very important mitigation strategy that parents can continue to push is that we need to keep washing our hands. So wearing masks, not coming to school sick, and washing our hands are things that parents have, you know, control over in terms of talking to their kids. And when they come to school, we have control over when we, when we talk to our kids. Right? So I'm going to leave the cleaning and the mitigation for a second. I do want to hit a quick piece on the COVID cases that we've had. To date, since students have returned to school, we've had a total of six cases, including the message that I sent out last evening and the one I just sent out before this meeting. So we've had a total of six cases that were related to the school community. Currently, there is no evidence of any kind of spread within the schools. What I mean by that is the positive cases that are connected to the school community have not resulted in additional cases of close contacts. At least that is, that is our current understanding. All of the folks that have been asked to quarantine under close contacts, we have not seen any of that community spread. To the DPH on our Tuesday meetings, they're seeing that statewide as well. And what they're saying is that's because they believe that the mitigation strategies in schools are working. The masks, the cleaning, all those pieces are important. So obviously, things can change as things go on, but that's the current situation. And so that is reason to support our continued mitigation strategies and the fact that they are being successful. So I appreciate all the families who are, are doing everything they can and all of our staff who are doing the same to, to keep us all healthy. So at this point, that's the end of my superintendent's update.
Thank you, Dr. Semel. Okay, next is the Board Chair report. I'd like to thank you, Dr. Semel, for the training workshop you provided to us on Monday, September 28. Duties and responsibilities were reviewed via his presentation with resources provided to us by the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. Goals were proposed, protocols and procedures were reinforced, some practices were updated, others represented past practice used by boards of education. It was a refresher course for some of us, new information for others. It highlighted teamwork, unifying behaviors, and expectations to preserve a functional, productive, and effective system for our board. And I thank the board members for their participation. Next, we want to make sure that everyone is getting the responses they need when they ask questions. So in order to get your questions and concerns addressed in an expeditious manner, I'm going to provide for you the protocol for resolution. First person to call with an issue, the teacher. Next person, department chairman. Next person, athletic director. Then the assistant principal or the house principal. Then the principal. Next, the assistant superintendent. In the case of specialty areas, pupil personnel services director, the transportation office, facilities office, food service, and then the superintendent. You are familiar with the administration hierarchy at your school. So you can select from the list where appropriate, and this list will be made available for you on our website. And again, if you need to, you can look up our policy on 1312, our parent guardian complaint policy if you need to also. So we would hope that this would help you and direct you to the correct person so you can get your answers in an expeditious manner. So thank you. Okay, our next item is the reports and action item. It's first one, the approval of the Trumbull School Lunch Employees Bargaining Unit Agreement, and our attorney, Dukas, will present.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm here to present and request your approval of a four-year contract between the Food Service Union, U.S.E.U., and the Board of Education. This is a group of 44 employees who work in food service, delivering the school meals to the students. The agreement that we have negotiated and are presenting for your approval is a four-year contract that begins and is retroactive to July 1 of 2020. The first year includes a 2% increase, which is, of course, consistent with the other contracts that we have presented and brought to you. The second year is a 2 and 1/4% increase, third year 2% again, and the fourth year 2 and 1/4% increase. Again, those numbers are consistent with the other agreements that I've brought to you this year and also consistent with non-certified settlements around state. I would also note that since most folks are at the top of wage scale, there is no significant impact in terms of step movement. Mr. Hendrickson has costed out the cost of the contract, which is in materials that we provided to you, which you're talking about roughly about $15,000 for this year and rising to $18,005 in the fourth year. We've also increased the cost share contributions a half a percent per year, each year of the contract. And then the only other change to the bargaining agreement is conforming the agency fee, union due provision, to conform to the Supreme Court decision in Janus, which prohibits mandatory union dues or service fees in the public sector. The, one thing I would note is that the, the lowest wage in the bargaining unit currently is $14.03 an hour. As I think everybody is aware, we now have in Connecticut a minimum wage that will go up to $15 an hour by June 1 of 2023. The, this, the increases I've outlined to you will leave that lowest salary just above the minimum wage in that, in the year that that goes into effect. So something we kept in mind in structuring this agreement. Because it is consistent with other non-certified settlements, it's consistent with the other contracts that we have settled, I recommend your approval of the agreement.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, I'm going to need a motion for this. Who's going to be?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the Trumbull School Lunch Employees Bargaining Unit Agreement presented by Attorney Dukas.
I need a second?
I'll second that.
Jackie Norse seconds. Okay, does anyone have a question they would like to add to Attorney Dukas? No? Okay, I will take the vote. All right, Tim Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Marie Petiti?
In favor.
Scott Kerr?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Norse?
In favor.
Andy Palo?
In favor.
And Lucinda Timpinelli in favor. Okay, that's unanimous in the process. Thank you, Attorney Dukas, for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item is the approval of the minutes, our special meetings. So I'm going to need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to be approved, special meeting, executive session, September 21, 2020, and the regular meeting, September 22, 2020, that's such a meeting, executive search, session, September 1, 2020.
I need a second?
Second.
Miss, Scott, did you second?
I think Marie did.
Oh, doesn't matter. I can second it.
Okay. Okay, so Scott, you seconded or Marie, one of the two, whoever you heard, Elaine, you can take. Okay, so now, any questions on any of these meetings? Everyone read them? If there is a question that you need to ask or if there has to be a correction, anyone has that, let me know now. No? Okay, so all in favor. Tim Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
In favor.
Marie Petiti?
In favor.
Scott Kerr?
In favor.
Jackie Norse?
In favor.
Andy Palo?
In favor.
Lucinda Timpinelli in favor. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move down to Personnel, Dr. Semel.
All right, so there is just one item on the personnel piece, and it's an important one. So at a recent meeting, the Board of Education unanimously approved the hiring of Dr. Tammy Hartman. Dr. Hartman will be starting her position as the Director of People Personnel and Special Services beginning this Friday. Before we bring her on, I do want to thank Dr. Hapkin. Dr. Kim Hapkin came on back in January and has been working in the Trumbull Public Schools as the Director of Special Education for the past many months. And I've had multiple conversations with her. And in fact, I had worked with her in a previous organization back in Bristol, when we worked together there. So it was good to connect with her again. She's really worked hard to keep the district moving forward as we search for a new director of people personnel. So we wish Dr. Hapkin great, great luck, good luck. I hope she gets some rest. I know she has some, some plans, but I do want to take the time to thank her. Dr. Hartman is coming to us from the New Canyon School System where her direct supervisors had nothing but glorious reviews to say about her. She also impressed multiple hiring committees along the process. Dr. Hartman has the expertise, the knowledge, commitment, and the social skills to do an excellent job here in Trumbull. I look forward to starting my work with her this Friday, and I believe that Dr. Hartman is on the call and would also like to say a few words. So I think I see her on the screen.
Welcome, Dr. Hartman.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the warm welcome and the kind words. And I cannot express my level of excitement to begin in Trumbull Public Schools and collaborating with all of Trumbull's partners as we work towards supporting and facilitating the learning of all students and just absolutely thrilled to be aboard and very excited to start.
Well, we welcome you. Thank you, and we hope you have a wonderful year.
Thank you.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving on. Approval of the 2021 Board of Education meeting dates, Dr. Semel.
Yep, so you had a chance to review the, the meeting dates for the calendar year 2021. So if you want to make a motion to approve that settlement?
I need that. Who's going to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached Board of Education meeting dates for calendar year 2021.
I need a second?
I'll second her.
Okay, Scott, your second. Okay, any questions? Okay, take the vote. Tim Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
I am in favor.
Marie Petiti?
I'm in favor.
Scott Kerr?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Norse?
In favor.
Andy Palo?
In favor.
Lucinda Timpinelli in favor. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, as we move on to the next, it is the 2020, 2021 student enrollment, Dr. Bud.
Thank you very much. There's a presentation that Ms. Marina has to present. So I'll just wait for that to come up. The board members have a copy. And this is the official October report of the October 1 student enrollment. These are the numbers that are used by the state of Connecticut to determine various entitlements of the district and are also what is used ultimately in presenting to the Board of Finance our enrollment from year to year. So Ms. Marina, if you'd go to the next slide, you'll see first board members of the final as of again October 1, pre-K and K-5 enrollment, which shows you the class sectioning at each school and at each grade. Ms. Marina, on the next slide, you'll see then this combined with the Hillcrest, Madison, and Trumbull High School enrollment. We have also shown you on the next slide how this looks at our six elementary schools over the five-year trend. So you can see changes at each of our six elementary schools over time. I would say that this shows gradual growth. These are all based on the October 1 counts. And if you're just looking at these five years, you see elementary, we've grown from 2730 to an exact 2,800 as of this past October 1. Ms. Marina, if you'll show the next slide, you'll see the secondary schools here, five-year trend. You'll, you'll see a little bit more of a gradual increase over five years here. That's a little bit of a decline from last year, October 1, but I'll speak to that in another moment. And then on the next slide, you'll see the K-12 schools together, our grand total enrollment as of this past October 1 was. Our grand total enrollment as of this past October 1 was 6,526. This does not include some students who are outplaced. They're represented on the first charts that you have there. I just want to say that what we have seen each year of the past few years, between October 1 and the end of the school year, is approximately 100 to 125 students entering the district. So although we're showing you the October 1 counts, we do have additional students enter the district after that point. And then in addition, this year in particular, we do have more students, like every district, whose parents, guardians have selected homeschooling this year. So that's represented on the final slide. The past five years, we have tended to range between 15 to 20 students whose parents, guardians have elected homeschooling after July 1. This year, between July 1 and September 30, we've had 63 students disenrolled for homeschooling. And again, that's not disproportionate to what other districts are seeing. It's sometimes based on health and safety concerns. It's based on parents, for a variety of reasons, choosing homeschooling. But I represent it here because based on communications we've had from these parents and guardians, I would expect most of these students to return to us for the 21, 22 school year, if not sooner. So although you might look at the numbers we have and say that, well, it's not as dramatic an increase in enrollment as we would have predicted, I would say that's offset just a little bit by the homeschool, and we will see a return to kind of a normal increase by the end of the school year.
Okay, thank you very much for that comprehensive report. Are there questions from board members for Dr. Bud? Mr. Ward?
Dr. Bud, very quickly, in the elementary level, you showed the breakdown of each classroom. Is, are those, any students who have selected their parents, they have their child home for distant learning? We don't show them on these charts?
Okay, so I, I know the question you're answering, you're asking, but I would just say before that, the homeschooling students I just mentioned are not represented.
I know those are the ones that...
That's right. They're just, they are disenrolled from the Trumbull Public Schools, and under Connecticut state law, their parents can educate them appropriately. The students who are selecting temporary remote learning, those are students whose parents are opting to keep them home. But if you will, those students are dialing into the classrooms every day. They are represented in these numbers. That's correct. Do represent those students. That's correct. That's right. If they're accessing the TPS classroom and teacher, then they're on these charts. And because I've, in the summer, shown you how those temporary remote learning students' numbers are changing, I will say that at the elementary level, we have approximately 18% of students who have elected temporary remote learning that rises to about 26, 27% at the high school level. They're all represented in these numbers because a parent can choose temporary remote learning at any time.
But we don't show any place on the chart. The class size, as you say, is 19. It might be 7.
That's true, but there might be two who are remotely dialing in every day.
There's no place that we can show that.
Well, we haven't represented it on here. That's correct.
So we have an idea of knowing in person, class sizes would be a little bit lower.
That's correct. That's correct, and...
Do you have a number of our chairs of the entire elementary school? Do you have a number?
Oh, we do, and actually, I can get that to you later in this meeting because it's just at my desk.
No, I just wanted to know.
It's approximately 18%.
18%. All right, thank you.
Jonathan, you once gave us a list of how many children were doing remote for each grade level. Maybe you could update that for our next meeting, you know, so we can see, have any come back? Have they changed?
Yes, I will do, ma'am.
I would, I would chip in that. I think that will be important. You know, with, with students coming back, and it would be interesting to see how those students who are remote learners are dealt out. Are there some classes who have more of those than others, especially at the elementary level?
Yes.
It would be important that there would be some equity between the remote learners in each classroom. Also, you know, whether that number is going to increase or whether it's going to decrease is something that, you know, we might be able to look at a little bit before we start trying to bring kids back to those classrooms.
Sure, and I will tell you, it increases every day. Probably 10, 15, or 20 students per day join the temporary remote learning family.
So it's not on the decrease, it's, it's...
Well, it is not on the decrease. First, for systemic cohesion, we have asked that if parents opt for temporary remote learning, that they join back into the classroom in person only at the beginning of a marking period or a trimester. But I would say even those parents who expressed some interest in coming back earlier are outweighing, particularly at the secondary level, by parents who are choosing to keep their children home for various reasons right now.
Now, I know that those, those students are right now connected to classrooms. So when that has to change, sometimes with shuffling kids when they come back, that's, that's another, you know, tough, tough situation to deal with with students who have been, you know, connected to a classroom all the way since September, and now possibly might have to, have to move.
So, right, so under our current scheme, these children who are dialing in, then when they come back, let's say at the beginning of the next trimester, they'll join that grade 1 class that they've been observing all along.
And there'll be room for them in the classroom?
That's right, because they're counted in these numbers.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Jonathan, first of all, kudos again for all the enrollment reporting you've done throughout this, this season, coming up to this Big Ten One deadline. Having, having managed all of the enrollment reporting in the districts that I support, I know how challenging it is, and you've done a great job, so thank you. The one thing I would like to see more of going forward, and I know you couldn't do that as the numbers were always changing, but it would be great to see this enrollment broken out by the key demographics that are important. Both, you know, obviously, FRL, Special Education Ls, so that we could see, and it would be great to see this historical view so that we understand how our, how our population has changed over time. And then also, I think, also tracking on a regular basis, the number of students that are out, outplaced would be important. So those would just be recommendations and requests for the future.
Yeah, I think good ideas.
I think the outplaced are on here, aren't they, Jonathan?
Yes, I, I think what I hear in that is maybe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kur, some interest in maybe the history of how those numbers are changing?
Yeah.
Analysis there.
Yeah, that would be, certainly as we approach the budget season, right? Those are going to be numbers. I, I remember last season feeling a little frustrated that we, like, didn't have those numbers at our fingertips as we were making decisions.
Scott, this is in, Scott. There used to be, when I was on the Board of Finance, because I used to ask for it, there was always a Special Education report that we had every year that showed exactly what you're asking for. So it's in the computer system somewhere. Those old reports, you just have to go back to around, I would say, 2017, 16, in there. Because I know we used to get a report every year that showed outplace students. Of course, you can't name any names. It's very generic, but at least it showed you the direction, you know, and how much money we were spending for the outplace students, so it really helped come budget time. So I know it's out there somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was one last year, but I know what Scott is saying. If we can have it clearer, like, there are 72...
Like, this kind of format, right, where it's just another couple of rows with those statistics?
With those, so in third grade, we would know we have five children who need OT, or we, you know, or, or we have five...
I think at one point during the budget season last year, this topic fleetingly flew by us, but I'd love to revisit it. Also, is the idea of whether, whether we apply some weight to our enrollment, right? That a, an at-risk student, for whatever reason, may count as a 1.2 or something in terms of our enrollment for calculating staffing.
Madam Chair, I don't think we want to get into identifying a particular grade or school, saying there are more special ed students at this particular school, and our kids are being identified at that grade level. It would be very careful how we present this to the public. And we don't, we got that many years ago, but we fall into a very different category. But we're careful. By what I deserve, when we talk about the kids who are home, I wasn't going to begin to identify all the, you know, the ALL students, the special ed students.
That's, that's an excellent point. I...
I agree with you, Mike. Yeah, you have to be careful. Yeah.
Like, the state, the State Department won't report any counts under 20, I think, but we, you know, we, we need to be thoughtful about how we break out that data. But in an overall for the district, I think it would be very important.
I'm confident that Dr. Bud will give us that information when we need it.
You'll actually see in the next report tonight some information on the ELL because it relates to the Los Links assessment. I think it would natural, it would be natural to build on that with some of these other categories. And actually, much of what you're asking for on the aggregate is publicly available, so we can show.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else with a question? All right, thank you, Dr. Bud, but you're going to stay there, please. Our next item is the 2019, 2020 Standardized Assessment Results, Dr. Bud and Mr. Guarino, please.
I'm splitting this in half, so I have the first part, and our goal tonight on Slide 2, Ms. Merina, if you can, would be to report the two standardized assessments that were administered last year. First, the Los Links assessment, and then the Advanced Placement examinations. And it's important to say on the next slide, as we do every time we present this data, that there's a lot of really rich work happening in our schools every day that cannot be measured by standardized assessments. However, standardized assessments do allow us to measure certain things. So this is a limited view of some of the things happening in our school system. Now, on the next chart, the one that's titled Anticipated 2019-20 Assessments, if we had been in school for the entire year, then our students would have sat for all of these assessments. And that's why, if we've been on the board before, we typically reported SAT data, Smarter Balance data, et cetera. That's the anticipated chart. But the next slide, the actual charts demonstrates what happened because of COVID-19. The Connecticut SAT School Day was eliminated. The Smarter Balance assessment was eliminated. The Next Generation Science Standards assessment was eliminated. So we're left with the two bookends on this page. The Los Links assessment happened before COVID, barely before COVID. And the Advanced Placement examinations were able to be done online toward the tail end of the school year. I should note for people watching, all of these assessments are going to be administered this year based on the guidance of the State Department of Education. So I'm going to speak about the first part of this, the Los Links. Now, this is the mandatory, next slide, annual assessment of all of our ELL students. If you're classified as ELL, you must take this annual assessment, which allows me, or mandates, that I have to show you, again, the growth in our ELL students over time. Now, if you've been on the board for a few years, you know that we've shown this chart progressively. But since the 2013, 14 school year, we have more than doubled the ELL students in our district. And this is interesting, coming on the heels of the prior presentation, because we haven't doubled the total enrollment in the district, but we doubled this subgroup. And in fact, the elementary, the K5, which is the blue part of this chart, has nearly quadrupled over that time. And I want to point out that the 278 that we have sitting with us today don't include 19 who haven't yet been tested. So this number almost only grows as the year goes on. Now, the board has supported ELL teachers over the past seven years and before that. But it's important to recognize, as I show the numbers of achievement scores on Los Links, that our ELL teachers and the classroom teachers are doing a phenomenal job of teaching these students as they proliferate over time. The next slide does show you the breakdown of our ELL students, first at the elementary schools. And I do need to mention something in relation to the two asterisks you see at Frenchtown and at Middlebrook. So these are based, again, on the October counts, which are given to the State Department. And you see the footnote on this page. When we have over 20 students who speak the same first language, so ELL students who speak the same first language, we are required the next school year to implement bilingual programming in that school. So that will happen next year at Frenchtown and Middlebrook because we have exceeded 20 Spanish-speaking students at each of those schools. The Curriculum Committee will hear a presentation at the appropriate time about what that bilingual programming will look like. There are different models, but essentially, in this case, it means that those students will receive some of their content instruction in Spanish during the day so that they are perceived not to fall behind. And the number 20 is an arbitrary number chosen by the State Department for that purpose.
So Jon, Jonathan, that will have a finance, have, in our budget, will have a financial thing. We'll have to hire another staff.
It will likely be built into the budget proposal in some way because bilingual servicing of this group will require somebody ideally who is certified in elementary education as well as Spanish.
So that's good for us to know that now, as we build a budget.
I agree with that, yes. And you then see on the next slide, our secondary breakdown. And as I've said to the board before, elementary students today become secondary students in a few years. So don't draw the conclusion that ELL is only an elementary issue. There just happen to be more students there currently. So back to the Los Links. I want to point out that this test is a rigorous test. We've looked at this before. And it requires that students are proficient speakers, listeners, readers, and writers of English. And the state sets a bar on this test for proficiency in reading, writing, and overall performance. So if you look at the next slide, I'm really happy to report that we have maintained a strong number of 20% of our students at the proficient level overall over the past three years. As, and then the, the N in red indicates what that number represents. So 21.9 students last year were 53 students of our ELL students who were proficient overall. Whereas 20% two, three years ago was 30 students. So with actually the same staffing of our ELL program, really sizable more numbers of students are proficient than were three years ago. And then on the next slide, we've also talked in the past about achievement versus growth. We have made increases. That's 82.5% of what the State Department has as a target for growth our ELL students have achieved. And I just want to point out something that's really obvious to us when we give the assessment, but somebody watching this or on the board may not totally, totally appreciate until I say it. When we get a student on February 28 who involves in the district and is ELL, they participate in this assessment, regardless of the fact that our teachers have had no influence on the student by then. So at whatever point you come in, if you're classified and the testing window has closed at about March 1, you take the assessment, you count in these numbers. So from that perspective, I'm really particularly proud of the work our teachers have done. And these students are our students, and they contribute a lot to the diversity of the system. So I'd be happy to answer more questions about that piece, but perhaps first I'll turn it over to Mr. Guarino, who's skimming way up to the high school and to our Advanced Placement assessment.
Thank you, Dr. Bud, and I know that you have copies of the presentation, and the public can see that as well. So in terms of our Advanced Placement, where we've been over the past five to six years, I think the general theme is that we are consistent, not only decreasing enrollment, but also supporting students in their success each and every day, and that's reflected in part how they, how they perform on the assessment. For our Advanced Placement courses, this is college curriculum classes, as students stay with us. stay with us, starting in mostly in 10th grade and progressing out. And it has benefits to our, to our students as they enroll in college and what their first year experiences might be. It has impact on the courses they may be able to take and for our families. It also has a financial impact, hopefully positively, excuse me, for, for our families when students are in their first year of college. On the next slide, it's a, I think that's a graphic that represents a lot of work, not by administrators, but by teachers and their commitment to provide diverse experiences for our students throughout the AP course offerings. When I look through that list, I think of all the changes we've gone through, the teachers that have stepped up and have showed real enthusiasm for these particular courses and sharing their passions with students who have similar interests as well. And that's a pretty comprehensive list. There are not too many courses that are left, unlike Mandarin, for us to offer. So that, we're really proud of that, that growth. On the next slide, you can see going back from 2015 until this current school year, how our enrollment has grown 130%. So where we're at, 590 students enrolled in AP back to 2015-16, we're currently right now this year with 1,355 AP students. And that, that's significant. That's about expanding our course offerings. That is about having faith and confidence in our students. That's about the Board of Education, supporting professional development, it's teachers stepping up and working with kids each and every day. And also some of the tools and resources that the College Board is now providing. We put all those things together and we're sitting at a really healthy growth rate. And I'm impressed that we continue to grow year after year. So kudos to our teachers and to our students. On the next set of slides, we really are focusing on enrollment in our AP courses and performance on these exams, which has remained to be consistent, which I think is a true testament to the investment that we've made. So 2015, we had about 12% of our students who participated in the AP assessment. And that kind of put us at the bottom of the dirt. And I think that served as a wake-up call. It also served as a point of momentum for us to know that we can perhaps look at the opportunities that we provide for our kids to diversify our course offerings and encourage more kids to participate in that. In 2019-2020, that number increased to 29% of our students who participated in the AP assessment. And that last year, when we presented this to the board last year at this time, when we looked at our 18-19 numbers, we moved from eight in the dirt in terms of our improvement. So we saw that growth. And while we want to always look internally, it also helps to look at what similar districts and similar communities are offering their students and their participation rates. And it also serves very well for us. On the next slide, 856 students attained score three or higher in the 2019-20 school year. And I think that, that is significant to, to always consider the experience that our students had last year. The AP exam is administered in the beginning of May, was pushed back just a little bit from the College Board. But our students were really faced, when we went on emergency remote learning last year, faced with a lot of work and a lot of commitment they put into their studies and what that would mean to them, our students were committed to, to finish that out just as our teachers were. As we met with our teachers when we had to make that transition, we talked to them about where they were and their sequence for the year, where students were as they worked with the College Board. Our students were positioned really strong to still be successful, given everything that was happening. I think, again, that's a testament to the students, it's a testament to their commitment to the investment that they put into, you know, their, into the program. So I wanted to share that because last year was different with that interruption right at that particular point. On the next set of slides, really to kind of highlight, really kind of following where we were in 2015 and 2016. And the first example is AP Language and Composition. So from 37 students in 2015-16 to 220 students last school year, and 80% of those students received a three or higher. So while we can look at enrollment, we always want to keep our eye on student performance. This is, this is not about just trying to get any student. This is about when our students are enrolled in our program, how do we best support them? And those teachers in this particular course, that, that group of teachers has expanded over the past several years, those teachers that are new to it, embrace the professional development, they collaborate with one another, they have the same goal in mind. And this year, we have 278 students enrolled in AP Language and Composition. And that's a really, that's a really strong indicator of the growth of that program and the success of the students and teachers in that. We also look at the expansion of AP US history as an example, from 32 students in 2015-16 to 52 students last year. Of those students, 96% scored a three or higher, and our current enrollment is at 96. So we see that continue to grow in the humanities. And some examples of mathematics, I figure, are noteworthy for the board to consider, AP Calculus BC. So from 22 students in 2015-16 to 60 students last year, and 87% of those students last year scored a three or higher. And currently, we have 54 students enrolled in that. And that's, that's impressive. And we know that we have another year of advanced mathematics study, multi-year of calculus, that some students who are current juniors will want to have an option. And we've even exceeded in our math department, even what the College Board offers. So we know that we have strong mathematical performers in our school and we're prepared to support them in 11th graders in BC, but also what comes next when they're seen. So we're really proud of that, that growth that we continue to see in that enrollment. Then finally, as an example, this year we do AP Statistics, from 12 students in 2015-16 to 31 last year, 96% of those students receiving a score or three or higher. And now we have 51 students enrolled in that. And I think AP Statistics is, I think, a really good example of really trying to build upon successes year after year and embracing the training and supporting kids through that. So I felt that with Dr. Bud's support, those were some really good examples to share with the board in terms of how we performed last school year. And I'm really impressed with our students' grit. It was interesting this year, or I should say last year, that the College Board changed many of its practices and allowed students to cancellation, to cancel an exam without having to pay a fee. And many of our students stuck with it. And I think that, again, is a testament to their hard work dedication and what they put into that. I think we should all be proud of it. And Dr. Bud makes the final thing I'll say, because we talk about this all the time. This is just one measure of what students do. And it's not the single solitary measure, but when we take a look at advanced placement and the goals that we've had as a school and as a district over the past several years, we, we continue to see this growth and we're impressed with our students.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Are there, does anyone have a question for either Dr. Bud or Mr. Guarino?
So can I say something, Ms. Timpanelli?
Sure, go right ahead.
So as part of the curriculum team with Mrs. Timpanelli and Mr. Ward, five years ago, we looked at these numbers. I know I personally was upset to see we were at the end or the bottom of the dirt. I know for a while there, we struggled, having been a statistics teacher myself, that we possibly were going to lose the AP Stat class. And here we are with probably two classes. So I'm sure Ms. Timpanelli and Mr. Ward will say, we are so proud of our teachers, Dr. Bud, and of course, our students.
Thank you.
I would just, yeah, I would like to just ask Dr. Bud and Mark Guarino to make sure when you go back, that you definitely let the teachers know what a great job they've done, how proud we are of them, especially that this was under last year's circumstances. So I think, you know, just tell them on behalf of the board how we do appreciate and recognize their terrific work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bud, I have a question. Back on the elementary at Frenchtown and Middlebrook with the bilingual, does that mean that you are going to look for a person that goes between the two schools or a person for each school?
Well, we, we will have the next few months to look at it. To be honest, it will depend on how the numbers evolve because those communities tend to have some more fluctuation and additions of students as the year goes on. There is the opportunity to share some services for sure between the schools. But we were actually in conversation with the State Department today. And the similar towns of West Hartford, Greenwich, and Fairfield have some bilingual programs for elementary in existence that the State Department is interested in, are, are talking to. So some different models, but definitely we can share some services between the two schools.
Well, I just want to make sure that everyone is served well because 51 students in Frenchtown and 78 at Middlebrook. That's a lot of students. And when you're doing a bilingual program, it's very different from a PLO program.
Exactly.
So, you know, let us know because that's, that's very important on how that will proceed.
Absolutely. Well, I would think we will have a proposal by the end of this calendar year to the curriculum committee first and then to the full board because it is a change in program.
Yes, it is. We had that at the high school years ago, Mr. Guarino, we did that many years ago when we first started ELL. And most of these speakers were Spanish speakers, so we had a bilingual, half bilingual class. And then we had an ELL class. We did it together, you know, one period was one and one was the other. It's a very different curriculum when you teach that. So, okay.
Chair, a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Ward.
AP, I see the next year's budget coming up shortly in December. Are we putting a slow moving towards AP additional classes for the next school year? Are we looking at it in the future?
I, I think I'd answer your question right now. At this particular point, we're not looking at adding new ones. I think, as I said, I think there's some language, whether it's German or it's Mandarin. I think one of the other ones that we don't have is world history. And I think when we look at what we offer in social studies, humanities, at times those will start to compete, you know, with one another. The AP seminar is another one to consider for the future on the Capstone project for us to take a look at. So I think we, I think we have a really robust offering. I think.
I know, but we have offered over the years, a very costly part of our budget. So now we're talking about elementary, the bilingual, are we talking about additional personnel for any new courses, any new AP courses for the next school year?
Well, I don't know. Can I?
I don't know, maybe I have a missing.
No, AP, you are, you are certified 712. Teachers who teach Spanish or teach math, you're certified 712. So you can go to tap school. We have been going to tap school for the AP. I'm sure Mr. Guarino knows that. So if there are any other courses you would, they would be able to teach them, our staff would be able to teach that. But it's, what I want to note is you have AP Music Theory, you have AP Art History, AP Studio Art, those were all additions that we didn't have in the past. And I know our curriculum committee had put those forwards, Mrs. Petiti, Mr. Ward and I, we just, we wanted to make sure that we were getting all those included. So you do have a vast variety of courses. And I'm sure if there's anything else that the teacher would like to teach, it's usually, they usually bring it up and say, you know, I would really like to teach this kind of course. And then they put it in the program of studies and they ask the kids how many would like to take this and that. That's all in that scheduling process. So you would know that before. And then it's, it's also a scheduling decision, whether how you schedule the school. If you're going to order this many, we're going to have this many classes of this. Let's say there, human, human geography. Okay, maybe you're not going to get that many students taking that. And he gets another saying, you're going to have globals, whatever, you know? So it'll depend on the enrollment, what the kids really want and what the teachers are willing to teach because it interests them. That's the greatest thing about AP is every teacher has their own, you know, passion to teach.
Ahead production budget.
Yes, totally. Your budget.
Are we writing in part the social studies program, the Longwood and Trumbull High School for the next school year?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to say it?
Yes. The brief answer to that, the curriculum directors in the area had a conversation with the State Department as well in the past week, is as I think the board will remember, there is a requirement for all districts in the state to implement a course in both African American and Black Studies as well as Puerto Rico, Puerto Rican and Latino Studies. And the State Department conception right now is that that will be a full year course. They will recommend that we adopt it for probably at our type of school, grades 10 to 12. And that, that be offered through the Social Studies Department, through the social studies certified teacher. But the details will be coming in the next few weeks. And then I anticipate that that will be coming to the curriculum committee at our November meeting to then come to the board. And that's our timeline typically to include things in a program of studies for the next school year. For full context, I'll also say that we likely will also, well, we certainly will be coming forward with a proposal for a health and learning course because that's required based on new graduation requirements for the class of 2023.
If I look at the budget, are we talking about enrollment? Have we looked at our numbers for next school year? Are we talking about enrollment going up or down? I don't know. Probably the doctor, there's a chance of looking at those numbers.
We are, we've actually scheduled all of our budget meetings with all the, the heads of the different departments. So we'll be having those conversations in the next, next few weeks so we can prepare on our budget. So I'm sure Dr. Bud has been looking at, at numbers along the way as we've seen the enrollment stuff that he's done over the past several months.
I know it's in our ELL program that I went to the workshop before the virus, one evening in the parents. It wasn't just Spanish people who, it was, I don't know how many languages now, but people I've realized in the community network, if someone comes in and speaks a foreign language, not all coming from that area of Spanish.
That's true. We have 29 different languages represented. Our top five, and the prevalence of these vary based on the school we're talking about. But our top five as a district are Spanish, Portuguese, Mandarin, Chinese, Polish. And the other thing I want to say about our ELL students is that the one commonality among them is that English is not their first language, but they represent cognitively and intellectually the whole range of student ability. And the best thing about our ELL students is that they truly enrich the diversity of our schools and our classrooms. So although they require special and legitimate servicing, in fact, they are great assets to the town and to our public school system.
We do attract those people and draw them home.
Thank you. And can I ask you, just a suggestion? I know you said that this new course, the Latin American Studies could be taught by just social studies teachers, but you really need to consider the Word Language Department because they major in that, Latin American Studies, you have to pass courses in that. They would be excellent teachers for that course also.
I tend to agree with you. The state is supposed to be issuing their guidance on that in the next few weeks and definitely will bring that to the curriculum committee. We hope we can make it into disciplinary.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have a little question. No, I'm in agreement with Ms. Timpanelli because we were just talking about you can't get out of a foreign language without taking those courses, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. You have to take Latin American Studies, you have to take Latin American Literature in order to become a Spanish teacher. So it's, unless it's changed, unless the requirements have changed, but I don't know that. But they would be, they would be very good at doing that because that's a passion for them. Okay, thank you very much. Very interesting report. Thank you very much. Okay, our next, Dr. Bud, you're going to still be there. It's the Trumbull Public School Teacher and Administrator Evaluation Plans.
We have to ask the board to take action on what I'm going to present in terms of adjustments to this year's teacher and administrator evaluation plans based on the COVID-19 pandemic. But first, on the first few slides, some relevant background. So I know that the board understands when we say this for the public, the superintendent has obligation for an annual evaluation of every teacher. And as I'll explain in a moment, teacher includes everybody who is a certified staff number below the rank of superintendent. So on the next slide, you'll see that the obligation is that the Board of Education receive an update by June 1st every year on the status of teacher evaluations. And then the final bullet on that page cites the relevant. And then the final bullet on that page cites the relevant statute that broadens teacher to mean not just those certified in teaching positions, but also those certified as administrators in the district. For the rest of this presentation, though, I will talk about the teacher evaluation plan and then separately the administrator evaluation plan because there are some differences. The next slide with the long bullet speaks to the fact that every board in the state has to implement a teacher evaluation support program that matches the state guidelines. So twenty, thirty, forty years ago, a district could choose to have lots of variance in this. And about ten years ago, the state started to control most of this. And in 2015, each local district needed to submit its own plans to be reviewed and accepted by the state. And Trumbull did that. And there is a professional development and evaluation committee in every district, which since last year I've been chairing in Trumbull. And the next slide shows our current members of this, starting with John Evans of the T E A as co-chair. So the next slides that you'll see have been reviewed and approved in content by PDEC prior to their getting to this point at the board. So our committee represents the range of K-12 in our district. Now, the next slide, the T B S protocols for supervision and evaluation mean that every teacher and administrator in the district has an evaluator that implements the plan that I'll speak to in a moment. And TVAL is our plan for the teachers and AVAL is our plan for the administrators. Now, as you noted in the next bullet, there are specific requirements for non-tenured individuals. And there are some exceptions to the next thing I'm going to say. But typically, non-tenured individuals are those in their first four years in Trumbull. There are some exceptions to that if somebody has come with tenure from somewhere else. The requirements for non-tenured teachers and administrators are not changing. So the next slides that I'll speak to only relate to tenured teachers and administrators. So why are we asking the board to endorse changes to TVAL and EVAL, AVAL for this year? Well, first of all, because of the pandemic, teaching and learning is different in a variety of ways. And the State Department has asked that local districts take that into account and adjust their teacher and administrator evaluation plans accordingly. So the PDEC Committee in Trumbull discussed the changes that the State Department recommended in September. They endorsed them and I'm bringing them tonight to you for the final endorsement. And so first we'll talk about the changes to the teacher evaluation plan. Every teacher works on at least one annual goal. Now typically, these goals are academic and they're linked to student academic performance. But given everything going on with the COVID-19 pandemic, the state has asked us to focus instead on three very important, different kinds of goals this year. Social and emotional learning for students, which we just talked about at a recent board meeting through what the P T S A is presenting for learning there. Student engagement and/or family engagement. These are exciting ideas for our teachers this year and they're actually highly relevant to what's happening in our school community. So that would be one change, that the annual goal would focus for teachers on one of those areas. The second change would be in terms of observations of tenured teachers. Our teachers in Trumbull who are tenured are typically on a three-year cycle. And depending which year you're on in that cycle, you have a variant number of observations and reviews of practice. The adjustment we're proposing would pause that three-year cycle for a year. And all tenured teachers would participate in two informal observations and one review of practice. And then finally, the third change for teachers would be in the summative rating. Now, in a typical year without a pandemic, ever since the state changed its requirements about eight years ago, a teacher receives a summative rating of one, two, three, or four at the end of the year. The state of Connecticut waived that requirement last spring because of the pandemic. And they have asked us to endorse this year not having that summative rating again, but instead have a teacher self-assessment and a narrative summary from the evaluator. And the state has recommended this and our PDEC Committee supports it as a way of more fairly representing the circumstances that all of us are learning under this year. Sherry.
Can I ask you one question? The narrative summary from the evaluator, what is the content of that summary? Just what the goals that they wanted or does it include the academics or not?
Well, it focuses on two things. First would be the goal that's been worked on by the teacher, but also all the Connecticut competencies of teaching. Because a tenured person who's on the path that we're talking about is assumed to be proficient and competent, but the evaluator is always reflecting on all the aspects of teaching. And that would be true also of the self-assessment by the teacher. That the teacher has the opportunity to talk about the goal he or she has pursued, but also all the other elements of the teaching. The next slides speak about the AVAL, the administrative evaluation system. You're going to see some similarities here. So typically, our administrators would have an annual goal that's academic in nature, focused on student learning objectives. And while that's going to continue to drive administrators' practice, the proposal by the state would ask administrators to really focus goals this year on one of these four areas or more than one. The reopening of schools, supporting the well-being of staff and students, supporting distance teaching and learning, supporting the health and safety of students, staff, and the school community. So of course, our administrators and like our teachers are continuing to promote academic goals. But the focus this year on these four areas will really represent where our community is. Then the next row down, in terms of observations of tenured administrators. This is really very similar to the current scheme. Our tenured administrators have two school site observations with feedback from their evaluators that would be combined this year with also artifact reviews that could be looking at student work, teacher work, et cetera. And then finally, like with the teachers, the four level summative rating this year for administrators would be waived by the state in lieu of an administrator self-assessment and a narrative summary by the evaluator. So our final slide before we open it up to questions would be, our PDEC Committee has worked, they've embraced these changes, and they've developed models for teacher goal setting. You may be familiar with the fact that teachers and administrators have to submit their goals by the end of October. So they're in that phase right now and PDEC has developed some models in social, emotional learning, family engagement, et cetera. Based on those goals, we will implement appropriate professional development. And we also have guidance coming up from the State Department on observational protocols and feedback forms. So if you're an administrator going into a classroom and some of the students are in room and some of them are at home dialing in, how do you fairly observe that and reflect on the performance for the teacher? So the state is issuing some guidance around that. The PDEC Committee endorses these changes, the State Department endorses these changes, but they ask the local Board of Education to endorse them as well, which is what brings me here this evening. Although it does say review and discuss, I believe, on your cover sheet, I would at least ask that you entertain a motion to endorse these adjustments.
Make that motion before we have our discussion with that, okay?
Sure, you can do that.
So I would like to make a motion to make the amendments to the teacher evaluation and administrative evaluation plans, both AVAL and TVAL for the 2020-21 school year.
I need a second.
I'll second Lucinda.
Okay, let's discuss, okay. I would like to see their protocol and what they actually are looking at and how they want to do these narratives. Because when you do a narrative, do they mean a paragraph or do they mean an actual narrative? We are actually speaking about everything. Because we used to do that years ago, Jackie and I were both on these committees to do this work. So we understand what this is. So is this going to be a paragraph or is it going to be an actual summary? And I would like to see what the state wants to do. I'm a little, I'm not comfortable right now with this. But I understand why they're doing it and I do understand it because, you know, there's there's just different consequences that occur in these situations. And I don't know if they thought this through the way they should have.
Yes, and where we are in timeline is the state has not released those models yet. So an option, probably not preferred, but an option for the board would be if you would want to table tonight and come back in two weeks when you've seen the models. I would just say procedurally, the difficulty we get into then is that we're very close to October 30th when teachers' goal setting and administrators' goal setting has to be completed. But of course, we'll share the models as soon as the state comes forward. And the Trumbull Board would have a right to say we want to enhance the models.
That's what I'm hearing. That's all I'm hearing about.
Jonathan, since they're writing their goals already, you have what they have as a development of a model for goal setting. So you could share that with us, you know, because they should have that if they're writing their goals by August.
Yes, we can share that with you.
Thirty, or if it's necessary, I mean, the board could always move two more weeks for developing their goals. I mean, there's no magic in October 30th, especially with this school. I think it's a good change with the circumstances. I mean, I've worked in Lucinda and John, who's your co-chair, he was on the original committee that wrote the plan that you have. So, you know, I think with the times, these changes fit for the, I would see the protocols, you know, the.
Right, and I'm just saying, if we wanted to, that's what I wanted to know, if we can enhance something or add, then we can do that, then that's all I care about, sure, we can, there's no reason not to approve it. I just wanted to make sure that we're adhering to a solid foundational evaluation, you know, not applied by night one, you know?
I agree.
Thank you.
So the motion is on the floor.
The motion's on the floor, anybody have a question they want to ask Jonathan? Mr. Ward.
How we do as far as the new people, personnel changes? And how are they spread out amongst our school system? Does one school have small members or big members or any particular school?
No, from, not all of our new teachers participate in the team program, which is for brand-new teachers in the past few years. But coordinating that, I will say that those teachers are more or less spread out K-12. Some elementary schools tend not to have teachers in that program this year just based on where retirements were. But you see those pretty equitably spread out. And then each of those teachers is assigned a formal mentor who receives a stipend from the state of Connecticut. And we have a team coordinating committee, we actually have a meeting tomorrow afternoon that really oversees the portfolio growth of those teachers. And in most cases, although the work you do for a team isn't evaluative, we try to have a goal for that aligned with the goal for this, so teachers aren't doing double work in their first couple of years.
Not a month.
It is, that's right.
Okay, that's great. Okay, are we all set? Okay, let's take the vote, so we're know. All right, Tim Gallo.
I'm in favor.
Okay, Mike Ward.
I'm in favor.
Mark Petiti.
I'm in favor.
Doc Care.
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Orso.
In favor.
Andy Palo.
In favor.
Lucinda Timpanelli in favor, okay. That passes unanimously, thank you, Dr. Bud. And before we proceed, I just want to know, is Myra Francis still here? Is she here at all? Bill? I just thought I would ask.
Did Myra ever come in?
I'm looking now.
Thank you.
If Myra is on the call, if she could raise her hand or press star nine? Or star six? Hello, J S, are you here for public comment?
We're looking for Myra Francis. Okay, well, we'll try next time, thank you, Katie, thank you, Bill, for looking for us. Okay, I'll move on to Trumbull's school reopening plan update, Dr. Stone.
Excellent, yes, thank you. Of course, I definitely want to make some comments about AP too. I was really impressed by the AP numbers that Mr. Corino went over. It's clearly there's been some hard work done by a number of folks. And so if we continue to look to increase, to increase those opportunities for kids, get more and more students the opportunity to take the AP class. That's always a goal, to see as many of them challenge themselves to an AP type course or to a degree. Some of them go well beyond that. In terms of reopening, this has obviously been a hot topic. I get a number of emails every day about when are we going to reopen further. Generally, very nicely, generally start by welcoming you to the district and then they follow up with, when are we going to get this thing moving further open? So clearly, the pandemic has caused a great deal of stress for just the world, really, over this time. And there's certainly no easy answers and all the decisions we make around reopening come with additional questions. However, in the end, I believe it's our responsibility and I believe it's, you feel the same way, to provide all of our students with the best education possible and to do so in a safe manner. And so everything I'm about to share tonight in terms of reopening, we need to make sure we think about it with a backdrop of the health data. And we need to be mindful that this year will likely ebb and flow around the health data that we see. So first of all, the health data currently from the state of Connecticut, they say that we can open fully K-12, every person could be in district, that's what the current health data sets. Trumbull Public Schools, like many other districts, decided to open as a hybrid model. And yet, parents, like I said, every day are sharing their struggles with me, especially parents of children of very young kids, kindergarten, first, second grade. I can tell you that in my trips around the district and talking to folks, our principals, our teachers, our staff has worked very hard to try to make sure that our practices and procedures where we started the year are being implemented with fidelity to make sure all those mitigation strategies are being done so at a high level. At the same time, many districts around us, and I've been reminded of this many times in emails to me, have opened up more full than we currently are. So I'm often hearing about other districts near us where they've got four or even five days of full in-person, a full in-person model to provide greater continuity for education for their students. A committee led by Dr. Bud, which also consists of six K-two staff and two principals and John Rello, our facilities director, met to discuss some of the challenges to reopening, especially around K-two. And that committee identified certain things like furniture and spacing and lunch issues. I can tell you that the teachers weren't, they certainly weren't jumping up and down to try to reopen. There's still plenty of anxiety around reopening, but that's to be understood. But at the same time, since it does create that kind of stress, we still need to keep in mind that it's the health data. That's, this is a health issue and that currently the health data suggests that we can reopen safely. Therefore, I do intend to bring all K-two students back to school on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, beginning this coming Monday, Monday, October 19th. And that would mean that for K-two, there would no longer be two distinct cohorts. However, parents would still have the opportunity, if they prefer, to keep their children in temporary remote owner status or even choose to go into temporary remote owner status if that's what they want to do. Because that's something that the state is requiring, we must have temporary remote owner opportunities. I will also be talking to Dr. Wheeler in the pre-K program. He'll be sharing some additional information, it would be tomorrow, and he'll be sharing information out to his pre-K parents. I know he's ready and willing to go, so he may be beginning on the same, same day, Monday, the 19th. I can tell you that principals have been reviewing their spacing options in their classrooms to ensure that all students have the minimum three-foot space distance. We often hear that six feet is the requirement, it is not the requirement, and this is something I hear every week on those D P H calls. We need to have a three-foot. And this is something I hear every week on those DPH calls. We need to have a three foot minimum space spacing. And they encourage us to make sure that all those other mitigation strategies are being taken care of, like don't have your children come to school under sit. Make sure you're cleaning your hands. Make sure you're wearing your mask. Keep the distance as much as you possibly can. Keep ventilation good. Make sure the cleaning is happening. Those those are all things that we should make sure are continuing to move on. Principals are also looking at using a combination of their classrooms and their lunchrooms in order to have lunch. And we have allowed principals to to look at their spaces and be able to use them the best way they see fit. Not every building has the same amount of space in terms of cafeteria spaces. So we're letting them, in terms of lunch, be able to to make it work for them. They've also had Megan Murphy out. I'm forgetting her exact title right now, but I know she has she's the fire marshal and she's had a lot to do with safe safety and reopening. And Lynn Steibrecht, our director of nursing, has also had multiple conversations. Unfortunately, Lynn and I speak often about cases generally, but she's also had input on this on these conversations. We are also going to be launching a new website before we reopen on Monday, the 19th. That website is going to completely re reconstitute our reopening plan. I felt like the PDF plan itself was a little clunky and we needed to make it a little easier to use. So we turned it into more of a website-based plan so that our families can easily access the different things around facilities and cleanliness and and all these different things. So we'll also be sharing that out to to parents prior to the 19th so they can see more information. It doesn't change any of our rules, but it does incorporate some of the changes that have happened from the State Department of Education in terms of information coming to us and some of the changes in guidance they've provided. Paul Capola and Dana Howers, get her last name, Fermander, two assistant principals of the two middle schools. I will leave that with me, working with the principals to re we put that together and I think they did a fabulous job. We are also going to send out a survey to all K-2 parents tomorrow, getting a chance to see what their intentions would be. So we'd have a chance to be able to look and review numbers. We already know what the current numbers say and what the class sizes would be, but the survey will help us get a better sense of what the K-2 parents will choose to do. Based on the emails, I think a lot of parents will be very happy with this information. But we also want to give this survey out to all parents. And then, when school does come back in full session for K-2, again, not Wednesdays, Wednesday's is going to look the same. We will watch how that is working out. We're going to continue to improve our practices and procedures around having more kids in the building. And of course, continue to pay attention to the health data. If all is going well, we should also be preparing to bring back more students. In this this case, it would be bringing back our grades three to five, full and in person, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. But we also should have our secondary schools begin to think about how we can bring our our six to 12 students back. I will say, I don't believe someone could try to convince me, but I do not believe right now that for high school students, we'll be able to bring 2,100 students back into the building. It's already hard enough for the high school to have a thousand or so students to be present on a daily basis. But along this conversation, I think we also need to talk more about what Wednesdays can look like. I mentioned earlier with the clean piece, I believe that there is a path towards bringing students back five days a week. But I will be bringing a a big committee around together around this so we can talk more about what all those pieces look like. But it really is important that we bring our youngest learners back as soon as possible because that constitute continuity of learning for them is is very critical. So I will continue to to update the Board of Education and the and the public on how this plan is being implemented. I'm excited about doing this. I know there'll be some anxiety about doing this for for staff, but from being in all the buildings and knowing how careful everybody's been, I'm confident that we can bring back our K-2 students coming on Monday. And I look forward to doing that. So that's my update on reopening.
Okay, does anyone have a question for Dr. Stone?
One quick one. You mentioned about, like I said, cafeteria, lunch area, adult level.
Yeah.
Presently, students eat in the classroom.
Correct.
And they all come back. So are they even possible or they've been going to eat in the cafeteria?
It's a little of both. So in some of the in some of the schools, the principals, based on the way their school is designed, they think it might be better to keep the students in the classroom. Where in other schools, they can see themselves having some of the sections or even grade levels going to the cafeteria. We need to keep the spacing appropriate, especially while while kids are eating because the masks are off. So we're trying to use our spaces appropriately. And again, not every school is designed the same way, so it's it's a function of the principal working with their staff to to make that work.
On the lunch base, do they get brought back in to watch these students?
We we still have all those A's and they're still going to be necessary. Yes.
So staff still has their 30 minute lunch regardless of all people?
It's in there.
Correct. Yeah, that's a requirement. So yes.
Dr. Zimmel, if we start if we start to use the cafeterias, will we still be supplying the kind of lunches we are now in the classrooms? Or are they going to go online to the cafeteria?
So that's a that's a great question and we've explored that. Currently, they when they come back on Monday, they would do the same lunches they've been they've been doing. They want to get a chance to watch how this is going to work without adding too many elements. However, as things are going well, which we hope is going to be the case, then I know Betty Cinco, the food service director, would like to start adding some elements of choice back in, but she'll be judicious about that as she goes. So there's definitely desire to add more opportunities for student choice, but let's bring them back first.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah.
So so I understand. So a K-2 parent, if they opt to go remote, they're essentially going to be full-time remote five days a week. Is that true?
That's currently, that is currently the case and that will continue to be the case, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anyone else?
Dr. Semmel, I would ask a little bit about the largest classes that would be coming back K-12. What do those numbers look like?
Yeah, so the actually enrollment report that Jonathan had put out there, the K-2 classes are are in very good shape. The principals have all been looking at their K-2 classes. This is, obviously, this is not the first time we're talking about reopening with the principals. So in general, in looking at all the numbers, the the total class size could be 20 or 21. But what will be in the actual classrooms is going to be more like 15 or 16. There is some ranges that go maybe up a little bit from there, but in this K-2 grouping, it's those sizes.
That's great.
Yeah, I want to make sure that they Yeah, it's helping us with the three feet, for sure. A lot of furniture has already been removed from the from the classrooms, trying to keep it to the essential what the teacher needs essentially. So there's more space than would typically be in there. So we can keep the three feet distance. The three to five honestly will be a little bit more challenging because our class sizes of three to five are a little bit bigger. So it depends on on that. So I think we're going to have to follow up with a three-five survey soon after to see what what would happen. So our principals can plan for for that phase of it. You had mentioned, someone had mentioned perhaps having students have to potentially leave their particular teacher in order to balance out numbers. I personally believe we should try to avoid that.
Yes.
The relationship that a teacher builds with with their student is very important and we see that with SCL work. Not that it's not impossible to do, but I would try to choose that later as a choice. Kind of kind of as a last choice because our our kids need that continuity, even the parents would, I'm sure, prefer to continue developing that relationship with the teacher they currently have.
It may need to be part of the survey of because when parents are making their decision about whether they're going to have their children come back to school or whether they are going to keep them home remotely, that is going to be an important factor as they're filling out that survey to what their choice would be as to whether their students would be able to stay with their teacher or not. And and I would also that you really consider that before you put that survey out because I think it's going to be a very, especially with those higher numbers, you know, as we get to the higher grades, the with those higher numbers in the classroom, it's going to be very, very difficult without making some of those moves. So I think that when parents know that if they opt to come back full-time, that they it it's possible that they they may have to move, especially when the numbers are high with with the higher with the higher classes, that seems to be kind of a an impossible task.
It could be. It depends a lot on how many permanent owners we have. And just to be clear, we're talking right now about three-five, which would be a like a later phase. For K-2, we're comfortable that we won't be changing any teachers. There there doesn't seem to be any indication that there would be a need for a change of teacher for the K-2 perspective. It's the three-five is the class sizes are bigger that we might need to, but we'll have to take a closer look.
Dr. Zimmel, for our next meeting, could we see like K-2? How many children are live in class and how many are remote for each? You know, that first sheet that Jonathan gives us tonight, it just on the next line show how many are remote. Because like if it's a class of 18 and there's three remote, it's still a class of 18, but I would like to see how many are remote that, you know, that's, I don't know about my colleagues, but after we're back for about two weeks.
No, I I think that's important because parents are, well, not parents, even us. If we look at it, you're a class of 20, but if you really only have 12 physically in class, that does make a difference.
Yeah, and we have no idea. Yeah.
Yeah, we I can I can provide that that information for sure. We are comfortable that we'll have the three feet of space for all the kids. So that's that's the first implication is that we do have enough room for our learners to have their their required space. But yeah, I think it's a good idea for for us to do that. That I don't see why that would be too challenging to to pull that together.
Dr. Semmel, Scott, I I was curious, I think this might build on Andy's question. Do you anticipate any shift in the experience for the temporary remote learners? Those those that are remote every day now, they will continue to be in the classrooms that they're currently in, right? And are there any shifts planned?
No, I mean, we we would expect them to continue to to dial in as as the phrase is used to to come in and and see their class. So I wouldn't expect any major changes to how that's going to function.
No, because they're in the class number. They're in that enrollment. I mean, if it says 24, we don't know how many are remote, but that teacher only has 24. There could be 20 in her class and four remote, but that's not going to change.
I'm just imagining that there's there's some kind of a difference there for the teacher to have, you know, essentially twice as many students in the in the classroom and a smaller number online and how to how to balance how to balance that.
It's a it's a very good point, Scott. And yeah, I was going to add on to that, that that is going to be something that the teachers are going to have to get used to. If they have six students in their classroom right now and the majority is at home, which I typically see when I go into classrooms, six may not be the magic number, but you see, you know, about six to eight kids in the classroom. So they're teaching most of their kids are actually at home. And now we're going to flip that a bit and you're going to have essentially two-thirds of your kids in class and you're going to have about one-third at home. But we all know that working, especially with K-2 students, that you prefer to have them in in the space with them. And so parents who are sending their kids to us, those children are going to benefit from having the teacher working directly with them. But there's still the option to not send your children and that's a a choice that the State Department allows. But yeah, the the teachers will have to manage more children in front of them. So all of this is all about choices and the teachers are going to continue to work very hard to make it the best education possible for all learners. That's what I see on a daily basis. They are working hard to make sure every child is attended to.
Thank you.
I guess another follow-up question to that is would are will we will we make this shift? Will will we allow temporary remote learners to make that change to in-person now or do they still need to wait until the end of the marking period?
They should be able to make that change now.
Okay.
And the State Department allows for that. We we request that parents wait till quarters and trimesters. But they would be allowed to to choose to come back.
Okay.
I am wondering how many would. They the people who have chosen to be temporary remote learners have a very specific reason, I believe. All very different. It's all depending on circumstances. So I don't know if going back for four days would have them change their mind, but that's why the survey to see if it does or will change their mind.
Dr. Zimmel, could we, could you email us a copy of your survey so we have an idea of? Again, that's only because people call, people ask things and it's just good to
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Well, hopefully, we have a good protocol in place, Dr. Duff. They will be able to call teacher, department chairman, athletic director, and so on and so forth.
Oh, yeah, I know. I know. And I always tell them to do that, but if I know what was in the survey, it also then when we see the results, we have an idea.
You don't need to know that. That's great. Anyone anyone else with a question for Dr. Semmel on this topic?
No, very good report. Thank you, Marty.
Yeah.
Thanks, Marty.
Welcome to hear our learners that come back.
Yep.
I'm excited. Good news.
Okay, the next topic we have is 2020, 2021 district goals. Dr. Semmel?
All right, so as you know, I would have preferred to be working on developing and passing these goals a couple of months before. But the way circumstances are, that's not the case. So back when we did our Board of Ed retreat, I had an opportunity, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, to to go over a few of these to go over these goals with you and to get some feedback from you. So just for the just for the public's perspective and also to make sure that all board members know, if these goals are approved tonight, my goal is and will be to post the full set of goals on our website. And when I send out my monthly update tomorrow, they'll be included. So all parents would have a chance to see all the specific goals that were being approved. But in general, there's five goals. There's a safety goal, which includes SCL, physical safety and reopening in a safe manner. There's a goal around teaching and learning, which focuses on ensuring that we provide the best curriculum, instruction and assessment for both synchronous and asynchronous learning. There's obviously a goal around budget, trying to make sure that we have a strong understanding of the current budget process, identifies ways to make our budget processing better moving forward and more transparent. And then, of course, developing a strong 21, 22 budget that is physically responsible but also identifies any additional priority spending. A couple of things were already mentioned this evening. And then there's a fourth goal around communication, trying to make sure that we have a cohesive communication process in the district that's consistent across the district as well. I can I can tell you that many schools have been excellent with their communication before we even made this a goal, but just trying to standardize our use of our website. And like I said, trying to make sure that there's a consistent communication process and also trying to make sure there's a two-way communication process. It can be very challenging for me if I get 200 emails. And and at first I was getting 200 emails. That's very challenging to try to respond to and do my work and do the work that the district is expecting me to do. But still, two-way communications with teachers is very important for parents and then with principals is very important. And I will continue to do my best to respond to to folks who believe that I'm the best person to respond to a particular question. And around reopening, I think that was appropriate. So communications are fourth goal. And then around the fifth goal would be around social justice. And the goal is really to create the Trumbull Public Schools co- Um, and the goal is really to create the Trumbull Public Schools Coalition for Social Justice. It would be led by a steering committee. And as I said at our retreat, I believe we need an outside expert on social justice. Someone who has a strong understanding of what social justice is and what it is not, because there are a lot of misconceptions about what social justice is and is not. So the co, the coalition would receive proper training, um, and identify priority work that needs to be done in the Trumbull school system. We've, we've identified some certain benchmarks on this topic, uh, already, but it will, I do not see this goal being completed in a year. I would not think the board would think that we would be done with social justice after one year. This is something that needs to be embedded in the curriculum. Dr. Bud talked about curriculum. Has to be embedded in the construction, has to be embedded in, in the way we do our hiring practices, our policies, making sure all that. And it's, it's really about taking a, a good look at what we currently do and being honest about what we need to change and then changing it. I think the Trumbull Public Schools, from what I've seen so far, do an excellent job. They do an excellent job. But every system needs to look, look at itself and say, what, what can we be doing better around any topic? And this has been a hot topic and it's been something that people, especially graduates, who have said, needs to be looked at. And the board in our conversations has agreed. Uh, so those are the five roles in a nutshell. You have them in front of you. Um, and I'll be happy to answer any more specific questions, but I'm excited to get the work started and accomplishing those.
Okay, I need a motion, please. Mike?
I want to make a motion for our superintendent on the, very specific and very awful lot to request to himself as a first year, not first year, in Trumbull for the first time. I hope we can support you and send them one of these goals. If I make the motion to accept the goal presented this evening by the superintendent for EPS 2021, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Norso seconds. Okay. Uh, any questions for Dr. Simmel?
Uh, just a comment. Uh, I, I just would like to say that, um, you know, we did have our training, uh, retreat the other night and we were able to go through these, these goals, uh, during that training. Um, they are robust goals, they are ambitious goals, and, um, I, I just think it's great for our district that we're, we're moving toward, toward these five goals. So I, I just wanted to thank you, Marty, for your, for your hard work on these and your, and your thoughtful planning of putting these goals together. And, um, I know that the board was, was very appreciative that night when we had our training and, uh, very excited to come all over board in this direction, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to take the vote. Tim Gallo?
I'm in favor.
Mike Ward?
I am in favor.
Murray Petiti?
I'm in favor.
Okay, Scott Care?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie Norso?
I'm in favor.
Andy Palo?
In favor.
Lucinda Timpinelli in favor. Okay, all in favor. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, Dr. Simmel, thank you very much. All right, is there any other question anyone has before I ask Mike to do his regular thing? Wait, wait. Anyone have any questions before Mike makes his motion?
No.
Oh, okay. Michael? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Have a good night, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.